Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Okay. I would like to call this meeting to order. Welcome to Main Township’s 174th Annual Town Meeting. At this time, I would like to call the Park Ridge Boy Scout Troop Number One to present the colors and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Everyone, please stand if you’re able.
Call guard forward march. Call guard halt. Call guard cross the house. Please post the colors. Scott Sutcliffe, or right hand over your heart. Will you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic, that is one nation under God, liberty and justice for all.
Two. Call guard forward march. Call guard dismiss. Please sit down.
Thank you, gentlemen, on a job well done. The purpose of this meeting is to inform the electorate of our township’s financial status and to act upon certain resolutions to be presented at this meeting. But first, I’d like to introduce my most efficient staff. My deputy clerks, Jessica Guzman, Vivian Kalish, and my chief deputy clerk, Eva Magnowski. These employees are the ones for making my office operate so smoothly on a day-to-day basis. My staff continually strives to provide exceptional customer service to everyone in our township, and they make sure residents are our number-one priority. At the clerk’s office, we assist in providing a variety of services such as passport applications, voter registrations, temporary handicap placards, reduced or free bus ride passes, license plate renewal stickers, fishing and hunting licenses, and basic notary services. The clerk’s office also provides Polish and Spanish translation assistance to our residents. I’m proud to report that we had a great 2024-2025 fiscal year. Our office processed 1,339 passport applications, which generated almost $47,000 in revenue, and we sold 191 license plate renewal stickers, which generated another 1,100. And we just started that last year, so we’re really coming along strong with that. Last year on August 6th, we also had our National Night Out Against Crime, which I’ve been the chairman for the last several years. That took place at D Park. It was another very successful, well-attended event with a lot of fun activities and wonderful raffle prizes. This year, I’d like to invite everybody to come to our next National Night Out that will be held on Tuesday, August 5th of 2025, also at D Park. And lastly, I would like to announce that, starting April 14th, 2025, the clerk’s office will be extending our Monday operating hours until 7:00 PM. This will allow our constituents that work a regular 9-to-5 job an opportunity to receive service without having to schedule time off. Please be sure to call our office to schedule an appointment for certain services. Again, thank you to my wonderful staff for their diligent, hard work, and thank you all. Now, I’d like to introduce your elected officials, starting with the trustees, the Honorable Kimberly Jones, the Honorable Kelly Horvath, who’s not with us here tonight, the Honorable James Maher, and the Honorable Asif Malik, our Highway Commissioner, the Honorable Ed Bouvet, and our Assessor, the Honorable Susan Moylan-Cry. And last, but certainly not least, our Supervisor, the Honorable Karen Diamond. Would also like to make note of a couple guests we have here with us. We have the former clerk of the City of Displanes, Gloria Ludwig, attending with us. And we also have a trustee-elect who is with us for tonight’s events. Elizabeth Lynch will be joining us on our board in May. Okay. Our first order of business is a selection of a moderator. I recognize the Honorable Trustee Jones for the purpose of making a nomination.
I am nominating the Honorable Renee Handed to serve as moderator of this meeting.
Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Okay. Motion to close the nominations?
No.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your cards. Renee, please step up. You’ll be our moderator for this evening.
It’s me. I’ll go ahead and swear you in. Right hand in the air. I do solemnly swear, solemnly swear, that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the moderator at this town meeting, so I’ll be gone. You are officially our moderator.
Okay. I’d like to appoint Parliamentarian, Main Township Trustee, James Maher. Okay, old business. Clerk Giannis, please present the minutes of 2024’s Annual Town Meeting.
One moment. We’ll get into them. I’ve got too many pieces of paper here. The 2024 Annual Town Meeting minutes have been distributed prior to the meeting. I ask that the reading of the minutes be waived and that the minutes be approved as submitted. Okay. I’ll be promoted in a second. So we’re good.
Were there any special board meetings held during the last year?
Yes. We held two special meetings in the fiscal year 2024-2025. The first special board meeting was held on November 7th, 2024. This meeting was held for the sole purpose to discuss impossible vote of elected officials’ compensation for the next four-year term. The second special board meeting was held on November 26th, 2024. This meeting was held to discuss upcoming programs and events for 2025.
Clerk Giannis, if the annual financial reports for the General Town Fund, General Assistant Fund, Road and Bridge Fund were distributed prior to the Annual Town Meeting?
Yes. The annual, excuse me, financial reports were distributed before the Annual Town Meeting.
Supervisor Karen Diamond, please give your annual reports and introduce your township chef.
Do you care? Would you rather it not be on? It is, I think. Anyway, welcome, everyone, this evening. And, you know, I see a number of you gentlemen standing in the back, and I just encourage you to have a seat. I’m going to be talking a long time. No, I’m not really. It’s not going to be that bad, but seriously, there are plenty of open seats, so don’t feel like you have to remain standing. Anyway, I wanted to just start out again by welcoming everyone who’s here. I’m delighted to see everyone who’s taken the time tonight to come here to our annual meeting. Really, I think this is our 174th Annual Main Township Meeting. So, you know, it’s something that’s been going on for a long time, and I hope that for a long time in the future, Main Township will be holding its annual meeting as it has in the past. So I just want to start out by saying, you know, these days, we hear almost every day in the news that the federal government is closing offices and firing federal employees. I think there’s about 60,000 so far, and additional 75,000 have accepted a deferred resignation deal. I worry not only about these employees that have worked, but also about cutbacks in services. But I’m here to tell you, I’m here to assure you, that Main Township values its employees and does not plan any cutback in services, does not plan to shed any of its employees. And I want to take this evening to appreciate our employees and to tell you about some of the valuable work that they do. And I want to start out by talking about certain types of services. First of all, I want to talk about the services that are provided, that relate to the health and safety, that serve the health and safety of residents. So I’m going to start out with Main State. Richard, I know you’re operating the camera back there, but can you please introduce your staff and have them stand up so we can know who they all are?
Certainly. I’d like to start with our agency and program coordinator, Ian Parker. And we have one of our family therapists, Erin Callahan. And then our youth program coordinator, Emily Toomey. And our other family therapist, Summer Zumbrock. Also unable to be with us tonight is our assistant director, Ariel Calvillage.
Thank you very much. Richard Delian, of course, serves as our Director of Main State. And one reason I wanted to start with them, talking about them, because they’re celebrating their 50th anniversary this evening, or this year, of providing mental health services and programs for at-risk youth. And they continue to expand their services throughout the Main Township community. Main State clinicians provided over 2,000 sessions of counseling at five different locations. I’ve been very pleased that they’re offering not only services here in the Township Building, but at a number of our schools, going out to meet the students where they are and providing counseling there, because sometimes it’s very hard for students to get here, for their parents to schedule visits here and bring them back and forth. So I’m glad that they’re out there providing those services. Main State also began 11 new programs this year, so they’ve been very busy. And I do want to mention in particular Summer Zumbrock, who is awarded the 2014 Adcoy Staff Award at the Toy Conference as a result of her significant contributions to Main Township I don’t know if any of you have walked by the counseling office that she uses. Sometimes no one’s in there, and I peek in, and it looks like kid heaven in there. There’s every toy possible, and it looks like it’d be just really a wonderful place for a kid to go and to receive counseling that they might need. Emily Toomey, once again, has organized our Community Garage Sale, which is a big project, and the entire township gets involved in it, raised about $5,000 in revenue to support Main State’s summer camp. That program’s been expanded to serve 50 children, and for the first time, vendors were able to sign up online as a result of our work with Civic Plus. So we’re continuing to get more modern all the time. So thank you all, Main State staff. Now, continuing on with the idea of serving the community in terms of their health needs, Recovery Connection, the Director Marty Cook, and his new help, Jim Naughton, who is serving with him, they’ve increased attendance at their Friday night meetings. And this year, they actually work to recruit people for First Steps Annual St. Patrick’s Day Dinner, and providing sort of a sober alternative to the activities that many people participate in on St. Patrick’s Day, going to bars and so forth. So it really gives them opportunity to go someplace else and hang out with other people who are not drinking. So Marty and his assistant, Jim, they continue to work with the local community to expand education and outreach for addiction-related resources. So now I want to talk about the food pantry. Is Michael here? Oh, there he is, way at the back. Michael, oh, I’m sorry, there’s two Michaels. I’m sorry, this gets confusing now. Michael Pittsferro is the first one I’m going to talk about, but I’m going to get to the other Michael pretty soon. How does that contribute to health? Well, of course, they really provide a tremendous amount of healthy, nutritious food to indigent persons within our township. And they really, in a short time, Michael Pittsferro has greatly expanded the food pantry service, adding about 250 new families to the rolls so far this year, or up to about 800 to 1,000 family visits every month. And the food pantry is continuing to serve local children in District 63 by providing what we call weekend bags. These are bags of food that they can take home on weekends. They’re not getting meals at school over the weekend, so they get to take those bags home with them. And District 63 identifies for us which families are most in need. And he’s continued, we’re continuing our partnership with Greater Chicago Food Depository, but it’s become much more expanded now. We used to order about 2,000 to 3,000 pounds of food every week. Now we get 8,000 to 12,000 pounds of food every week. That’s six tons of food we’re bringing in here for our residents. And Michael Pittsferro also does pickups from Panero, Mariano’s, Jewel, Chick-fil-A, I think is your new one, and United Airlines. So what are we getting from United Airlines? I asked Michael, and he said, “Well, and this is courtesy of Jack, too, Jack Wizniewski from OEM. I think you had a contact that put us in touch with United Airlines. We’re getting their leftover little packets that you get, you know, when you fly on the airline. And I went down to see some of them, and they’re actually, they must be the first-class packets, because they’re much nicer than the one I got a few months ago on United Airlines. So anyway, good for you guys. So, and also want to thank the Highway Department. I know you guys have helped pick up loads of food and bring it over here, so thanks very much. I appreciate you doing that. Then, and also just a little nod to Jessica Fox, who really sort of, you know, held the fort down in the food pantry while we were in-between directors. So she jumped in and did that. Thanks, Jessica. And I, to move on now to General Assistance. General Assistance also, of course, helps our residents stay healthy. And one thing they do is they administer the CETA and LIHEAT program, which pays utilities bills, so some of our indigent families can continue to heat their homes. Not only that, but they also provide a lot of other services to our staff, to our residents. Oh, Kathy, would you stand up and introduce your two staff members that are with you tonight?
My assistant director, Luce Manessis. My office manager, Stephanie Janus.
Thank you very much. I consider Kathy and Luce to be the two pillars of General Assistance. They’ve both been here for decades, and I don’t know what we would do without them. They’re extremely experienced and knowledgeable, and they’ll be training a new employee soon. I think her name is Bex Jones. Do I have that right? Bex Jones, yes. And anyway, they all will rely on Stephanie Janus. She answers the phones, greet people, screens clients, set up appointments, does everything that needs to be done for General Assistance. So thank you all for the work that you do. All right. Also, in terms of ensuring the health of our community, we recently started a transportation program. This helps people get to their doctor’s appointments and sort of physical therapy appointments. So after years of planning, we started this years ago, Richard was with me, and Dana, contacting PACE officials, working through it, adopting policies, passing resolutions, eventually, we were able to rent a van from PACE, and we now have a driver that drives people to their appointments. So we’ve been doing this for about six months. Is Jenny here? She is also very helpful in setting up the schedules for that van driver. So far, we’ve had about 86 riders sign up, and Marty Zimmerman, who’s our driver, has driven about two, over 200 trips, taking people to their doctors, and we’re hoping that will expand over time. So our mainstreamers, Marie, where are you? There you are. Would you introduce your staff members?
Today, I have Monica Gochevich with me. Tali and Xada Mokachik were not able to make it tonight, but Tali is assistant director, and Xana is the program coordinator.
Thank you, Marie. The mainstreamers also contribute to the community health by offering free vision and hearing testing. They did that this year. They also offer fitness classes. They held a self-defense program. And one thing I think they really do is help combat isolation among our seniors. They have innumerable programs that they offer, trips, theater outings, boat rides, historical tours, luncheons, bingo, day at the races, movies, computer castes, twilight drawing, it goes on and on. So, you know, they just really help seniors get out of their house, get something to do, meet new people, which I think is all good for their health, everyone’s health. It’s good to get out and socialize. So thank you very much, mainstreamers, for what you do. All right. Resident safety, health and safety, I think I mentioned, and health and safety. Jack Wizniewski, would you stand up, please? Jack’s goal is creating a disaster-resistant community with a focus on hazard mitigation. So Jack does everything from issuing weather alerts to enlisting volunteers and a couple of paid staff members to help him with crowd control and traffic at our large events. He’s also organizing and updating and arranging for repairs and improvements at the OEM building, and he’s conducted training exercises and stop-the-bleed and weather emergency table chop exercises, too. So Jack, thank you for all you do for Main Township, and keep up the great work. Thanks. So in terms of health, we also have a few other things that we do that are really not any particular department. We regularly offer immunization clinics here, and we schedule blood drives. This year, I worked with Mariana Sparopoulos. She’s Water Reclamation District Commissioner, and we organized a health fair that was in the parking lot out here, and we also held pet immunizations. These are sort of fun events to go to if you like animals. Neighborhood Watch, Kim Jones has for years organized Neighborhood Watch meetings every month, and they do that with the sheriff. Let’s see, Penny, are you here? There you are, Penny. Thank you very much. I want to thank you and the officers of the Sheriff’s Department who come out to those events. I think we have firefighters that are often there, too, Kim. So they help the residents know what’s going on in their communities. And also with the Cook County Sheriff, another thing I was able to do this year, I arranged for them to come here to our parking lot and offer free catalytic converter painting so as to hopefully discourage theft of catalytic converters from the cars that people park here in Main Township. So they brought a dozen people and did a great job, so thank you for that, too. And just finally, tying up with the cyber, cyber safety is another type of safety that we’ve been working on this past year, and that’s really an internal thing that we’ve been doing, just trying to make our data a little bit more secure, and Richard has been working on that quite a bit. So the next main category of services that Main Township provides is improving and beautifying our community through maintaining roads, enforcing our codes, and offering recycling opportunities. So Highway Commissioner Ed Bouvet, would you step forward a little bit so people can see you and all your assistants? You guys are hiding in the back there. Come on up.
Hey, I’m here. Thank you. [applause]
My right, Tyler Woods. Justin McIntyre. Peter Medas. And then also down here, we have Zachary Carter, Chris Savinia, Sean Hayman, and Forman Rich Brans.
Thanks very much, Ed. Highway, the Highway Department keeps our streets and sidewalks in good repair, free of snow and debris. They’re also working on large projects with the Water Reclamation District, such as flood control, and expanded bypass in the future. So I’m looking forward to that. And they also have smaller little things they do, like the pollinator giveaway. That was this year. I think the tree giveaway was last year. So that’s been great, too. Nader Kazali, are you here, Nader? I have to look out over our, there he is. Okay, Nader is our one-man code enforcement department. So he does a great job driving around the township. I think he knows it like the back of his hand. It was fun. A couple times I’ve gone out with him and, you know, ridden around, see where he goes and what he does. And he seems to have a good relationship with our populace, you know? Instead of writing a lot, well, he has to write some tickets, but he also sort of cajoles people into complying with our ordinances and cleaning up their property, and also asking, acting as an intermediary between the populace and the flood control trash removal to make sure that, you know, people are in fact getting everything picked up that they need for that. And he also helps coordinate events and helps out all the time in other departments. So thank you, Nader. Nader, stand up. Have people, there you go. So also, keeping our community beautiful is all of our recycling efforts. Now, we’ve done paper shredding for some time. The prior administration has done that, but I expanded that to a trio of paper shredding, electronics recycling, dumpster days, and then, actually, in January, we do the holiday lights recycling, too. And I’m trying to figure out how we can do hazardous waste. Ed and I have been talking about that, and that’s something that maybe we’ll get done in the future. So, you know, elected officials like myself, we often have ideas for events, but it’s actually the staff that usually does all the real work at these events. So just as an example, electronics recycling, it took place last summer on a blistering hot day. I was out there, but in the dumpster, trying to lift up one television after another, was Mike Simon and Steve Batista at the time. I’m sure it was 120 degrees inside that dumpster at the time. Jack arrived a little bit later. I think, Jessica, you were there, too. So, you know, they do some of the work that’s not really seen all the time, but it’s some really very heavy work that they do and perform for our community. So another thing that, you know, we do to beautify is participate in the paint-a-thon. Monica, I think you worked with Mike on that, and there’s going to be another one this year. I think 10 houses got painted last year. Is that right? So anyway, that’s great. But Mike Simon, if you would step forward, actually, and introduce your staff, please.
I’d like to introduce Jessica Fox. Our newest employee, welcome to Main Township, Jonathan Wolf. I also would like to introduce our building monitors, here with us tonight, Joe Custick. And we also have Robert Caro.
So maintenance was very busy this year, in particular with replacing the roof over General Assistance. It was a huge project, and Mike had to work with consultants and the roofers, and it took quite a while, but it is done now. So a couple of big projects for you next year, replacing that floor in Main State offices, and maybe after that at some point, replacing the floor in the community room, too. So those are, those are things on our list. All right. Okay. Educational programs. Mainstreamers this year did a lot of information programs, and they made it free for the first time this year. So we’ve had huge crowds for those. We have, we had about 100 people in this room about last week or the week before. So to the max, the room is filled up with people. Nile’s Public Library has presented a number of seminars dealing with spam, cybersecurity, organizing photos, media literacy, et cetera. I’m bringing in the North Shore Legal Aid Clinic to do a Renters Rights Seminar. And Susan Moylan-Cry with the Assessor’s Office arranged for the 2024 Board of Review Property Tax Seminar. More about the Assessor’s Office lately. But I just wanted to, you know, mention that we do a lot of educational programs here, too, but fun events, too. So there was Trunk or Treat was earlier, this was last fall, Turkey Giveaway. Turkeys were provided by Cook County Commissioner Maggie Trevor and Jewel on Bussey Highway. Asif organized a separate turkey giveaway also in November of last year. Asif also organized the Indian and Pakistan festivals that he’s organized for some time. They’re growing larger and now are at D Park. Ed, you did the twist for Tots, I believe, right? And Peter, of course, the National Night Out, a really large event that has gone on for years now. Thanks for organizing that. And all of the elected officials have appeared at parades, Taste of Park Ridge, and other events. So I’ve been delighted to have fun with our residents, too. But there may be some of you sitting in the audience thinking, “Oh, that’s great. Services are.” Services are great, but what about my taxes? What are you doing to keep my taxes low? And that's a good question. That's a very good question. One thing you want to do is, first of all, know about your taxes. How can you find out about them? Well, transparency is important to our administration. At my request, Richard started putting the comptroller fiscal annual financial report on our website. Already, a lot of information, of financial information is on our website. And speaking of transparency, Eva and Jessica Guzman spent a great deal of time responding to FOIA requests. I know that they do that because I see all those requests, and I, along with Kim, have to approve each one of those requests that comes through. So, there's several every month, at least, that we are responding to. So, in terms of taxpayer relief, we have what I think of as individual relief and community-wide relief. So, in terms of individual relief, Susan, would you please stand and introduce your staff members?
Thank you, Susan. I would really like to do that. I have my chief deputy assessor for 22 years, who I would not be able to be on the office to talk to without her, Elizabeth Coy.
Deputy assessor here tonight, Dee Phillips.
Because of different circumstances, I have three people who could not be here, and the township hall knows Faris Ebenay, also AKA Sam, and also Doug Babbage and Rich Pugnir.
So, some of the ways that the assessors, by the way, if you've been in our office lately, it's just been a steady stream of people into our office this past week, people waiting at the counter, being provided relief by the Assessor's Office. The Assessor's Office processed over 2,000 exemption requests this year. That includes current and past, including homeowners, seniors, freeze, veterans, disabled persons. All those types of exemptions help individual residents receive the tax relief that they deserve, and they processed or they answered or assisted with 14,000 township residents with their questions and concerns, providing guidance in property tax matters. And they processed 5,700 permits, ensuring that tax revenue is properly captured and distributed to the appropriate municipalities. So, those are for individuals, but what have we done for all the residents? Well, a few things. One thing, at my suggestion, the board did not raise the levy at the town fund or the general assistance fund this year. It's just kept it flat, as the Highway Department has done for a number of years now, so the levy rate is not going up. Grants, we've worked on getting grants, which means this covers programs where we don't have to use tax dollars. Recovery Connection brings in a grant. Richard, last year, received a grant for the in-school counseling and is applying again. I'm also applying for the Displanes grant for our van program. Michael Pittsferro and I are applying for an all-state grant, and I did apply and receive a grant from Rivers Casino for our food pantry. Now, speaking of our food pantry, I mentioned we received all this donated food from the Greater Chicago Food Depository, but also local restaurants, grocery stores, and individuals who donate food and money. And actually, for the past few years, we've had our own garden, too, so we bring in a little food from our garden, too. But all this food, all this food comes at no cost to the taxpayer. The tax, all the food that goes through the food pantry, it all comes from Greater Chicago Food Depository or those other sources that I mentioned, so it costs taxpayers nothing. And another thing that Michael did, Michael, would you stand up? Pittsferro, I don't think you stood up before. By the way, is Sally here? Is Sally here? Sally is his one part-time assistant.
I'm just not here, but one of our volunteer children, she takes.
Oh, Sherry, hi, Sherry. Would you stand up, Sherry? Sherry has been, uh, she, Sherry does the kids' bags for us, but Michael now has 60 volunteers. Is that right, 60?
Two volunteers, that's all.
So, I think last month you had about 600 donated hours. Is that about right? Okay, so think of that, you know, imagine because Michael's able to enlist all of these volunteers, that really saves us a lot. I mean, imagine if we had to hire people to do 600 hours' worth of work. It'd be very expensive to the taxpayers, but that's all donated, too. So, you know, I just think that we are, as a result of volunteers and donations, are able to do a lot without tax dollars. And finally, we started putting money into the Illinois Fund this year, and we're making the money that we do have work very hard for us. We used to receive 0.5% interest at a bank. We're now getting 5%, 10 times as much, through Illinois Funds, so that is really increasing the amount of money that we can bring in in interest without doing anything, you know, any other, any other work other than having the money there in the higher-paying account. And I want to thank Vicki. Vicki, are you here? There she is, because she stays on top of this all the time and says, you know, we need to move money in or out, make sure we have enough money to cover the checks, but still making as much money as we can in the higher-paying funds. So, moving on to administration, I just want Dana to rise, and she's our administrator, and introduce the staff that perhaps doesn't deal directly with the public all the time, but really supports all the rest of us in our dealing with the public.
So, to my left is Ruba Aliyah. She's our attorney of defense. And to my right is Vicki Rizzo, our deputy assistant. And she's actually going to do a couple of instructions as well.
All right, so I'm going to introduce Paula, Paula, Paula. We also have Isabella DeBogec, she's our finance assistant. She wasn't able to be here tonight. And our other receptionist, Jenny Raffey, she also wasn't able to be here today, but thank you.
So, our administrative staff has been working very hard this year. We've had to hire a number of staff members, which means a lot of interviews, and Ruba has to do a lot of processing of new people. She makes sure we all get our benefits, and importantly, she makes sure we get all our paychecks, too. Thank you, Ruba. We appreciate that very much. And we have been working, Ruba and Dana and I, with MGT, which has been doing an employee salary survey, and it's taken a lot of time and effort, but that is complete now and will be voted on, I imagine, at the next board meeting. So, Dana, also she prepares and monitors the budget, puts the newsletter together, deals with contractors, handles other emergency, and every other miscellaneous things, basically takes their thing I can't do, I don't have time to do, or I don't want to do, so she takes care of that. So, anyway, for all these services that I have just outlined, we want to thank our valuable staff and tell you how much we appreciate you and how much, and recognize how much you do for the people of Main Township. So, what about future plans? Well, I mean, I have more ideas for improvement, but I think, as all you have known for a while now, I was not chosen to be slated to run for reelection with the rest of the current officials, so I was not on the ballot, and that means I won't be here to serve Main Township as supervisor, but you will be here. You will be here, and I trust and hope and expect that you will continue to serve the township as well as you have for some time now. But I will throw out a few suggestions, and I will acknowledge, first of all, that a committee has been formed, which came up with suggestions for what should be done in the future, and there's quite a list there, and residents may come up with quite a few suggestions, too. Robert, one of our PR experts here, I think will be presenting more information about that at the next board meeting, so I won't say any more about that, other than I imagine there'll be quite a few suggestions from the public. So, here's a few ideas I just will throw out, just three. Daniel Burnham, by the way, is my favorite city planner, and his most famous saying is, "Make no little plans." So, I've got some big plans, anyway, to throw out ideas. One is, build a new building. What do I mean? I build a new building for the food pantry, is what I'm saying. It could be an addition to the building to the northwest corner. It could be a building someplace else, could be renting a structure, but the food pantry has really outgrown the space that it is now in. It is, you know, every day, they're trying to bring six tons' worth of food down that little elevator there, and I live in fear that it's going to break down some Monday, and Tuesday will run around, will come around, and we'll have hundreds of people, as usual, trying to get in and use that food pantry. So, I just think it's a situation which, something needs to be done, you know, and I don't know exactly what, but I think it really has outgrown that space there. Another thing I would, and it's not unusual, other townships do have a separate building, some of the nearby townships, Hanover, I think Elk Grove, and other ones have separate buildings, too. So, it's not unusual. Another suggestion I would have is to set up an administrative adjudication program. Nader does a great job encouraging people to comply with the ordinances, but such a program would put more teeth in our ordinances. I was very proud when we codified all our ordinances, but to have an adjudication program like that would help, and that's something you can talk to your attorneys about. Finally, I would like to see the van service expanded, trips to grocery stores, shopping centers, events, things like that. Again, some other townships that are no bigger and sometimes smaller than ours have fleets of up to 10 buses to take residents to various events and places they want to go. So, those are some things I throw out as suggestions. But right now, I think the next thing on our agenda is, I think the awards are right now, I believe. Okay, all right, so, I told you guys in the back to sit down. I warranted. All right, okay, just a couple of minutes longer. Kim Jones, would you step up here, please? So, Kim Jones has served as a trustee for 10 years, and she's seen a lot of changes during that time. She's served with a lot of different people, and she has continued to, as the longest-serving board member, she's served Neighborhood Watch for years, organizing that, and also serving as a FOIA officer, too. I think you had to take the training online, too, didn't you?
Yes.
Which is actually a pain, I know.
Every year.
So, every year you have to do it, right. So, anyway, I want to thank Kim Jones for her service and present her with this certificate for 10 years of service and the pin that comes with it.
Thank you, Kim.
Thank you.
Perfect, thanks.
Thanks.
And we also want to thank you for your service.
Well, thank you very much.
Not just here, but other community services as well, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Kim. Thank you. Okay, next, Dee, I saw you, Dee. Where are you? Didn't I see her? Oh, yeah, okay. All right, Dee. Okay, sometimes it's a little hard to see you, but no, we love you. Come on up here, Dee. Dee is one of our part-time employees, one of our very valuable part-time employees. Main Township hires quite a few people who work on a part-time basis, and Dee's worked for us for 20 years, and.
Congratulations.
And, you know, I.
You'll break the young rep.
You know, our part-time employees might not work a lot of hours for us over one week or two weeks, but over time, if they stay with us for decades, they've really devoted a tremendous amount of hours to Main Township and its residents, so thank you. Thanks very much, Dee.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, thanks to you. All right, and Robert Carosa, I don't think he's here this evening, is he? He's not here this evening. Okay, fine. All right, so we will save his. He's another part-time employee, and he has worked here for 25 years, so I just think that's amazing. We don't all see him that much because he works in the evening and is our evening monitor, but I often see him when I'm leaving, and it's just nice to know there's another pair of watchful eyes here. And I think mainstay staff, you know him fairly well because he helps your people get back to your offices, right? No, okay, all right. So, finally, a little drumroll here, Monica Yashovitz, please step up. Monica has been serving us for 25 years. So, Vicki told me it was 25 years, and I said, that's got to be a typo. She doesn't look old enough to have worked anywhere for 25 years, but she told me it's right, so, okay, congratulations. And I just wanted to mention one other thing about Monica. This year, at the TOE, the Township Officials of Illinois Convention, Mainstreamers Annual Mystery Day trip won the Innovative Senior Program of the Year, and Monica is very involved with these mystery trips, and she likes to play on them, and wears costumes on them, too. So, I can't wait to take one of these trips because it's not the mystery, it's the costumes I'm looking forward to, Monica. So, anyway, thank you for all your work, and, you know, I think it's wonderful that despite being here for so many years, you still have this creative bent to you and thinking of new programs and fun things for our seniors to do. So, thanks very much. All right. All right, well, now I am at my end, I remember my arcs, end of my remarks. So, in conclusion, I just want to say that I'm sure Main Township will remain well-served by its dedicated and competent staff and officials. So, thank you very much, and I'm going to sit down now.
Thank you, Supervisor Diamond. Clerk Pete Giammas, please present the Sergeant Karen Leder Memorial Good Citizen Award.
One of the things I'm going to petition for is a light over here again. Every year, my glasses get a little stronger and I need more light over here, so, but I'm here to present the Sergeant Karen Leder Award, Good Citizen Award, and like I do every year, I would like to start out telling you a little bit about Sergeant Leder. She was a veteran of the Cook County Sheriff's Police who lost her courageous battle with cancer back in 2010. Sergeant Leder was the Township's Community Liaison Officer from the Cook County Sheriff's Department, and she was deeply involved within Main Township and our residents, especially in the Neighborhood Watch program, our National Night Out Against Crime program, Special Olympics, and Animal Rescue, which I know is very dear to her art. She was a resident of Main Township and dedicated to making a difference in her community and making Main Township a better place. I'm proud to have known her and to have called her a friend. This year's recipient of the Sergeant Karen Leder Good Citizen Award are Sam and Carol Riccio. For years, Sam and Carol have demonstrated exceptional kindness and generosity by delivering individually-tagged treat bags for every holiday throughout the year, for the children in the food pantry, children who attend mainstay youth and family service programs, and for the children who visit our office with their families for various other services. In addition, they have been regularly donating food to the Main Township Food Pantry for many years. What sets Sam and his wife Carol apart is their personal touch and dedication they bring to this heartfelt endeavor. Each treat bag is thoughtfully assembled, reflecting the spirit of the holiday, ensuring each child feels valued and celebrated. Our mainstay program offers services to children from low-income families, and these children are grateful to receive these treats as a special surprise during the holidays. Whatever the holiday, Sam and Carol have made it their mission to spread joy and compassion through these small, yet meaningful gestures. Their contribution to our community food pantry is regular, consistent, and appreciated by our pantry staff and those in need from our Main Township community. In addition to the joy Sam and Carol spread, they are very humble and never request any acknowledgement for their good deeds. Their consistent efforts exemplify the qualities of a true good citizen, selflessness, kindness, and a relentless drive to make the world a little brighter for those around them. We wholeheartedly believe Sam and Carol embody the essence of this award, and we cannot think of anyone more deserving of this recognition. I am honored to present Sam and Carol Riccio with the Sergeant Karen Leder Good Citizens Award in recognition of their unwavering commitment to brightening the lives of the children in our community. Sam and Carol. the lives of the children in our community. Sam and Carol.[1460.01][1460.01][applause]
Congratulations. Congratulations. That's for you. Step over, and we'll take a picture with the chairs.
Sure. There we go. Straight ahead. There you go. You got it. There we go. Big smiles. Congratulations. Thank you.[1516.01][1516.01][applause]
You're welcome to say a few words if you'd like.
You don't have to. No one will put you on the spot, but I think it's an important time. And then your name is also going to be added to the plaque that we hang out in our hallway, and this is the first year that a couple has won, so you guys are breaking ground for the award as well.[1545.83][1545.83][applause]
As Pete said, Carol and I do not do this because we want accolades. We are very humble. We grew up as middle-class families on the northwest side of Chicago, okay, and we've been very fortunate through our lives to be able to do things for the better of others. And Marie, Paula, Jessica, they were very much aware of how I would feel about the award.[1587.76][1587.76][laughter] As much as we'd like to do these things, we like to live in incognito, you know. Put us in witness protection program.[1597.01][1597.01][laughter] You know, we don't need this. But we are very thankful, and we are very thankful that we can help the township and others throughout the world, because this is what this country needs today. We need to help people. We need to be kind people, and we need to be able to look at each other and be able to just work through things. So, can I say anything?
Sure. You know, again, just thinking about the children that are serviced by the food pantry and other services here, when we're kind of going through our little practice and our, planning our project, I just think about, well, what would I want if I were these children? And a special little treat that my mom might bring home or that I might get when I come to visit, I would think, would make my day. And so, I'm happy to hear that that's the case as well. So, thank you so much for this lovely recognition.[1651.46][1651.46][applause]
Supervisor Diamond, please present resolutions of approval of the electors.
So, we have a couple of resolutions for the electors to approve, and the first one I'd like to present is Resolution 2025-5, which provides, it's hereby resolved in order that the electors present at the annual town meeting of Main Township, held this 8th day of April 2025, that the next Main Township Annual Town Meeting shall be held on Tuesday, April 14th, 2026, at 7:00 PM at the Main Township Hall, 1700 Ballard Road, Park Ridge, Illinois. So, is there a motion to pass that resolution?
Second.
Second.
Votes show cards?
No.
Motion passed.
The second resolution I have here, 2025-6, provides that it's hereby resolved in order by the electors present at the annual town meeting of Main Township, held this 8th day of April 2025, that the moderator of this meeting be compensated for his services in the amount of $75. Is there a motion?
Moved.
Anyone for a second?
Second.
Vote. Vote or show of cards?
No.
So, the business of this meeting is now concluded. Are there any further comments? Okay, I don't have any comments. Can we, a motion to adjourn?
So, move. Second.
Motion agreed. Thank you all.
Yep, can show your cards one last time.
Okay.
One more vote.
All right.
There we go.
Motion passed.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.